People have changed so much.
Would you please join in the Pledge of Legions? Pledge of Legions.
To comply on the United States of America, into the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Chelsea, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kelsey?
Here.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Here.
Ms. Wood?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
And do we have any motion to excuse Ms. West?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes from the special city council meeting of December 30th. It's regular city council meeting of January 10th, 2022. Were there any additions or corrections to either of those? We have a motion to approve submitted?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The communications that should be in your packet, uh, the, you want to go over these or you want me to? Doesn't matter.
So we had, uh, four letters of endorsement for the Dora from West Main Street Winery, Brewery, Tavern 1888, Bar 130, and the Cimarron. A letter from Ohio Ethics Commission reminding elected officials to file their financial disclosures. A thank you letter from Main Street Ravenna for the city's contribution. And then there was one more that was sent out. It was from the Mental Health and Recovery Board.
Thanks, Chelsea. Any questions for those, on those? Are there any delegations from the public this evening? All right. We should have received the report of officials. Chief, I saw we are gonna get, sounds like Valentine's Day present?
Actually, look, promising.
Is that the bigger?
Yeah.
It's been kind of sketchy so far, so let's, we'll see. We've had a strong conversation on this.
That's about the fire engine. There's... February 14th, when hopefully fingers crossed arrives. Was there any questions from council on report of officials? Do we have a motion to accept this submitted?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And committee meetings will be on, uh, February 14th, right now at 5:30 PM, uh, beginning with Utilities Committee?
Yeah, so be one item on the agenda.
And Information Systems to be determined for now. Planning, Mr. Karras?
Uh, we have no items tonight for consideration, but we will need a meeting on Monday.
And Committee of the Poll will be Tuesday, February 22nd, 7:00 PM. Uh, Public Health and Safety, Ms. Michael?
Yes, we have several items on the agenda tonight, and I'm almost assuming we will have a meeting.
And Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Harper?
I believe we have four items for consideration this evening, and I believe we will need a meeting as well.
Personnel, Mr. Kelsey?
Uh, do not plan for a subcommittee meeting, uh, next week, and so that you don't have to come to me again a little bit later for Parks and Recreation, uh, do not have a report tonight on Parks and Rec.
And Community and Economic Development, Ms. Wood?
We have a couple of items on tonight's agenda and to be determined.
Any updates with the cemetery that we should talk about now?
They're, they will be getting a 3% pay increase retroactive to the beginning of January. That, when I say they, it'll be all employees, part-time and full-time.
We're having a hard time finding contractors, um, to provide bids for the bridge repairs. So I'm just putting it out there, maybe Mr. Finney knows of...
How much are they willing to spend? Because I need a contractor that submitted a bid.
Um, we did receive, uh, something from Humble, and we received another one for, I, the name is, um, can't think of the name right now, but the second one was for like, I believe it was $80,000.
Yeah, yeah.
It was just on...
And I know what Humble's price is, but what's the Cemetery Board willing to spend?
Well...
I mean, I have a very inexpensive...
It's a very... It's a very tight budget.
Put a culvert in, put a culvert in and fill it in, stick the handrail on the ground and call it a bridge. They won't listen. Been dealing with this for two years.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty much giving up until they decide, I'm giving up until they decide how much they want to spend, how much is in the budget for them.
Well, you keep saying they, two-thirds of them. Yeah, well, two-thirds of them. Yeah. Well, I'm not saying we should, I'm just saying you keep saying the they, as if there's somebody else in the world.
The other option is eliminate the bridge altogether. It's not, it doesn't need to be there. Now, there's a lot of tremendous amount of opposition on eliminating that because of its...
Right. Historical level?
What, and what it's been representing and been used for, uh, parades and things of that nature. You scratched a hanging out there.
I see that.
All right. So there's no other updates on cemetery?
It's hard to put a budget on it when you've got heavy money.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we'll have to come up with a number real quick, uh, and get that moving.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, first reading ordinance is then, uh, beginning with Resolution Number 2022-009.
A resolution in support of the Brownfield remediation grant application to be filed by Neighborhood Road Ravenna, Ohio.
This is CED, Ms. Wood?
Yes, this is in order to support Neighborhood Development Services to apply for the state's Brownfield remediation grant, uh, first round, and I believe 31st was, uh, the deadline to get this in, but it would be for the cleanup of the county, the old county engineer's site on Cleveland Road.
Questions on this? We have a motion to waive three separate readings? Uh, I'm sorry, it's a resolution. Do we just need a motion to pass or accept?
Move to pass the resolution.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the, the agenda is ordinance number 2022-10.
An ordinance accepting a donation to the Ravenna Fire Department in the sum of $1,000 from the Swedlock Company recording estimated revenues in the sum of $1,000 and appropriating the sum of $1,000 in the fire department and declaring an emergency.
This is Public Health and Safety, Ms. Michael?
Yes, so actually it's a total of $2,000 that we are receiving from Swedlock. Um, 1,000 of it goes to the fire department, $1,000, uh, we'll re-collect that in 11 after this one, um, for the police department, and there are no matches to this. It's a donation that they have been doing annually for quite some time now, so we are very much appreciative of that.
Any questions on this item? We have a motion to waive the three readings?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Need to adopt the emergency clause?
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And then a motion to pass the ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
All right, that ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-11.
An ordinance accepting a donation to the Ravenna Police Department in the sum of $1,000 from the Swedlock Company, recording estimated revenues in the sum of $1,000 and appropriating the sum of $1,000 and declaring an emergency.
Just like the last one?
Yep, I just repeated it from separate different departments.
Any questions from council on this item? We have a motion to waive the rules?
So, second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And then a motion to pass?
So move. Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-12.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between University Hospital and the City of Ravenna for emergency medical training program field experience and declaring an emergency.
This is also Public Health and Safety, Ms. Michael?
Um, this is also spoke about in committee, and this is allowing somebody who is going to school to be paramedic, um, EMT to run along with our fire department. So it's us going into contract with UH.
Any questions from council? We have a motion to waive?
So move. Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Need to adopt the emergency clause?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to pass?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey? Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
All right, that ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-13.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to apply for the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Safer Grant to fund three full-time firefighters and declaring an emergency.
This is also Public Health and Safety.
And for those of you that don't know about this, um, we had a drastic change from all the discussion that we've had on this in contemplating, um, this grant is, if we were to receive it, it's 100% paid for, um, for three years, and we do not have to keep the firemen employed if we are in a... This has been a wonderful change of faith here, and, um, I see no reason at this time not to pass it. Um, I think it's a great opportunity, a great resource, and a great way of training people for free. So, um, I don't know if anyone has any additional questions, like to ask the chief, but we have talked about it in length, and again...
Yeah, the only question I have is, are you, are you, the changes, it doesn't, it doesn't get appropriated in years two and three?
Nope.
But the cutoff point in which we have to keep people is this past three years then, or is it six years?
Well, you don't have to retain, there's no repayment.
At all. You can get income after one year.
No.
Three. Oh, okay, well, that's what I was asking. So it's three, not six?
Correct. So when we initially started the paperwork, legislation that we were, were in November, the 2020 guides were drawn, so when we presented, we presented based on the 2020 guide. When we started actually writing the application in the middle of January, when it came out, they had what they called the NOFOs. In the NOFO, they changed the language to say that there's no repayment anymore, they gave them the clause out, and gave it a 1% subsidized for three years.
Questions on this item?
Uh, I do have, uh, a couple of comments about it. I think, uh, this application has caused us to, uh, enter into discussion what appropriate staffing is for firefighters, and I think that's a good discussion to have, and it's one that's been very enlightening for all of us. The addition of, uh, three firefighters to the force is about a 17% increase in personnel, which is a pretty significant number for increase in personnel. Whenever we're talking about staffing, uh, we're not discussing at all what we think about the fire department. They are excellent, and they're doing an excellent job, but discussion of staffing is a separate issue, uh, than the performance of the folks at the firehouse. So I do agree that calls are up, wait times at the EMS, I mean, at the hospital are up, number of absences for COVID are up, the number of quarantines are... disturbances in the back of the room are up. But all those numbers are up. I think a valid question to ask is, are those COVID-related numbers, and are those numbers going to go down in the future? And are we causing, and are we doing a staffing solution now based on temporary, uh, numbers? That's a question. If you look at our numbers, our EMS calls are huge, huge, huge in the number of calls. Of the calls, for example, this past month, I think there were like, oh, 233, uh, for EMS and 33 for fire. So only about one call a day for fire, so, uh, the EMS calls are up too. So as, as, as we talk about staffing, are there ways to handle some of these EMS, uh, calls that, uh, we can look at and, uh, decide what to do with? But given all of those comments with the changes in the grant application, uh, there's no way I would vote against it. Absolutely, it's a, I think it's a no-brainer, it's an excellent, uh, opportunity once they dropped the requirement that we had to keep them on afterward for three years. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity, and after three years, we may be able to see, uh, if any of those conditions were temporary or not, and if this is the correct and appropriate.
And let me, one comment I want to make on that is, it's not council's responsibility to decide how to staff the fire department. On a financial part of it, yes, um, is a budget off, but it's up to them...
Sure.
...to decide and also administration on, you know, with union contracts as well. So that's a little bit, I think, will be tricky for council to try to get involved with, um, but I do appreciate your, your thoughts because it's, it was well said.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I'll just make a quick comment. I know these three employees, after they're hired and equated, that they'll be an asset, and it will be, uh, somewhat a decrease in the overtime, uh, starting soon in the duration.
We are right, uh, we have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
So moved.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
We have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And then we have a motion to pass the order?
So moved.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
All right, that ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-14.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 2021-110 by amending Exhibit A, Section 1, Police Department, subsection B, by adding one full-time union dispatch coordinator and one full-time non-union police secretary and declaring an emergency.
This is also Public Health and Safety, Ms. Michael?
Yes, um, we also have, um, talked about this in length in our committee, um, in finance. This is a restructuring of the department that we kind of knew about after retirement that was gonna happen, and that Jeff had disclosed what his plans were a while back, and, um, Karras creating a position, um, as well as restructuring the position we have. So there will be a little bit of more of a cost, but it will also offset too, with some of the changes.
Questions from council on this? We have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And we have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
And a motion to pass the ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. The next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-15.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement for the 629 grant agreement to administer the grant for the Agreement for Ryan Parkway Construction and Declaring an Emergency.
This is sponsored by Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Harper?
Yeah, this grant is through the Ohio Department of Development, it's for $367,000, and this is just to say that, uh, we'll be good stewards of the money. But on the boulevard, and in the ordinance, it says Ryan Parkway, so I don't know where...
It should be Parkway.
It should be Parkway.
Okay. So it needs to be corrected with the state. All right.
Any questions on this item? We have a motion to waive the readings?
So move. Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Need to adopt the emergency clause?
So move. Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yeah.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to pass the ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-16.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for the construction of Ryan Parkway according to law and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, similar to the last one with Mr. Harper?
Yep, just as it says, it's allowing us to, allowing the mayor to advertise for bids for construction.
Any questions from council on this? We have a motion to waive the readings?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And we have a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
And then a motion to pass the ordinance?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 2022-17.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, Office of Jobs and Commerce, to administer the grant and accept the grant for the Agreement for Ryan Parkway Construction and Declaring an Emergency.
Also Streets and Sidewalks, Mr. Harper?
Yeah, this is just another pool of money, um, for the project from ODOT. This is in the amount of $140,000, $140,500.
Questions on this item? We have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Karras?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Need to adopt the emergency clause?
So move.
Second.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And we have a motion to pass the ordinance?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Ma- Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-two-two eighteen.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement with Portage County to administer the Transportation Improvement District Grant for Rayanne Parkway and declaring an emergency.
And part of the bundle, last one.
This is just the piece with the county.
Any questions on this?
How much was this one for now?
This was.
The county.
This was the county.
This is.
So this is just so we could administer the CID grant.
Okay.
The grant was about one-hundred-and-eighty thousand.
Okay.
What it ended up. Originally it was two-twenty, but prices changed, so it went down to one-hundred-and-eighty.
Okay.
Yep, this specific agreement is just for the city to administer for the county.
Okay.
Any other questions on this item? Do we have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
Some of.
Second.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And to adopt the emergency clause?
Some of.
Second.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears? Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And to pass the ordinance?
Some of.
Second.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
All right, that ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-two-two nineteen.
An ordinance recording estimated revenues and appropriation, appropriating funds for the twenty-twenty-one Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, CHIP, and declaring an emergency.
All right, this is sponsored by Community and Economic Development. Ms. Wood?
Uh, yes, we were awarded the Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program from the Ohio Department, or Ohio Development Services Agency. And this is just to appropriate and accept the funds.
Any questions from council? Do we have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Some of.
Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
I was looking at Rob, like he was looking at me. I don't know what.
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And then a motion to pass the ordinance?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
All right, that ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-two-two-twenty.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a memorandum of agreement, MOA, with the Ohio State Historic Preservation Office and declaring an emergency.
This is also sponsored by Community and Economic Development. Ms. Wood?
Yes, this is an MOA with the state's historic group regarding the two-eleven West Main Street property. We will agree to place a record memorializing the site. Uh, the building is not historic, but it is located within a historic district. So this will memorialize the building that once stood there and also the restrictions of making sure that the preservation of the attached wall um, to the adjacent building is done appropriately to follow historic guidelines.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? Do we have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Some of.
Second.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And then a motion to pass the ordinance?
Some of. Second.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
All right, that ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty-two-two-two-one.
An ordinance to appropriate an amount not to exceed nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the capital funds in UDAG for Rayanne Parkway and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, and this is also sponsored by Community and Economic Development. Ms. Wood?
Yes, the nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand uh, is an estimated amount for the entire project. The grant funds uh, that we receive will be deducted from that. The UDAG funds will be used to fill in any gap that is required to complete the project. So if we don't need the entire amount, we won't be using it.
Any questions from council on this?
This is just like a placeholder for all the stuff we get.
Yeah, exactly. So we're gonna have to pay it, then we're gonna get reimbursed, so you're gonna have to pay it on somewhere. I mean, I, I guess my question is the, I mean, just for the audit purposes, I'd like to know how much is gonna go into the capital versus the UDAG, but I don't know if we have that exact breakout. Well, we don't really know, because we haven't been.
That'll be determined once we get the bids in and we see how much of the UDAG will be required.
Okay.
And obviously, anything that's not used can go back into the UDAG.
Uh, the, the dollar figure of two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand, I think, was uh, money that paid off one loan that was taken out of the UDAG and that, that was placed, and it was paid back into UDAG. So that was the figure that we were using if we consumed the whole thing.
Any other questions or comments on this? Do we have a motion to waive the three separate readings?
Some of.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
And a motion to adopt the emergency clause?
Some move.
Second.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
And then a motion to pass the ordinance?
Some of.
Second.
Ms. Michael?
Yes.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
All right, that ordinance is adopted. The last item on the agenda is resolution number twenty-two-two-two-two.
A resolution in support of House Bill fifty-one to allow virtual council meetings until July first, twenty-twenty-two.
And this is as it reads, just in support as a tool in our toolbox, not saying that we're gonna go back to virtual, but in the case that, that this bill passes, that we have this to use. So with that, are there any questions to this resolution that we all sort of received?
So, so House Bill, if it passes, expires in July. Is that correct?
Yes. That, the virtual.
I noticed somebody, maybe you sent me something, that some uh, municipality is allowing itself to meet virtually.
So I know Akron.
Akron.
Akron isn't an Aurora, which is just quoted.
I think it was Aurora, it was the one that. But I don't, is that? Is that okay? Why do we have to support this bill if we can just pass our own?
Is it something on the charter that's allowed with it?
Well, I'm not sure exactly how it came about. Is this the Health Department of Health? No, this is a House bill. This is from the House of Representatives. It was based on recommendations from. Oh, I don't, I don't.
I believe Aurora's was part of their charter that was being inserted into the charter. I can be, yeah, okay.
We do have a charter review.
Right, but that wouldn't take place until the next.
I understand. I just wonder.
No, but I do.
Even long-term, I think it's not a bad, and not just, yeah.
I mean, if we have a situation where someone's homesick and can't leave the house, I think we should be able to use.
Or, you know, three or four of us are under quarantine at the same time, like we ran into, you know, a certain situation.
I just worry that it's not legal if the state prohibits, you know, um, virtual meetings. So I think that's something we have to be careful about. But if it's something others cities are doing and are allowed to do, I think it's something we should, for long-term.
I think we've had those kinds of issues throughout the country, as far as small boards, you know, state legislatures, and, you know, kind of, you know, buddy heads, as far as, you know, these kinds of things are concerned. So, I guess eventually it just gets worked out because somebody files a lawsuit and the judge says, no, you can't do it, or yes, you can do it. So, I mean, I, I think really it does kind of, that's the kind of the situation to talk. I'm not gonna say that, you know, obviously it's in the charter, it's in the charter, so that would be covered. But it's less than that, then, you know, it's a matter of, you know, someone going off in this direction and saying, no, we shouldn't do it, and then someone takes it to court and the judge makes a ruling.
Right, I think the charter back when this was put in, this technology that we have now today wasn't being thought of. Or the things that went on didn't go on back then, so, such as COVID, for example. And we've put money into this and have really done a good job in being able to, you know, do stuff via the internet. Um, I think it's something that we need to find out if for sure, since the charter is active right now, if this is something we need to get there, we need to get an answer right away.
Steve, you taking it down?
I think part, not to go too deep in the weeds, but I think part of it too is some boards don't allow phone, voting over the phone, because then people stop showing up. So I think that's part of the conversation too, to make sure that if you're having an in-person meeting, you're not just using that as an excuse to stay home and.
No, I think it has to be emergency situations.
Yeah, just writing that in to the charter, if that were to appear.
Not by choice.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I do support this, and I support the House bill. I just, I, I question because of the temp, the temporary nature of it, what, what that implies, but anyway, I do support it. And do we get the requisite endorsement?
What's that?
This was not something that went through the committee process. Did you get the requisite?
Yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, your packet should be in. There's two sheets too. Signatures on two separate sheets, just so you're aware. We will not go virtual next week, so.
Yeah, well, we have to wait for the House. This is all we're gonna support the House.
All, I guess, all, all, all we're voting on tonight is a resolution in support of House bill. So, House bill will go either pass or fail on its own. Uh, in this instance, I am going to vote no on this resolution because I do not support the, uh, moving to virtual meetings next, over the next two months. So, just thought I.
House bill only allows us to, it doesn't require us.
Right. I guess it's just a general statement of my belief on virtual meetings at this time.
Yeah, now, I'm, I'm kinda with you on that, but, you know, and I think we need to tread lightly on how we construct.
Pack your coats, it might be meeting outside then.
Well. It's a good point. It's temporary, so I would see a few problems.
All right, well, with that, um, do we have a motion to support resolution number twenty-two-two-two-two?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Post?
Oh, post, yeah.
No.
That is everything on first reading of ordinances.
I have a signature.
Nothing on second or third reading of ordinances. Is there any old or new business coming before council?
I have a question about, and I don't know if this is old or, oh, sorry, did somebody else speak?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Cliff. I guess you probably, this, this, I don't know if it's the appropriate place to ask this, but I'd like to have something put into the committee meetings next week. She was addressing, I'm not sure which, are we, are we gonna start addressing the political signs in our city? Especially the ones that have language on them seem to be kicking it down the road. There are ways to do that. We talked about it again today, because I drove through Main Street today, and I noticed political signs sitting in our street in the snowdrifts today. Okay, we're several months off from an election. There were governor political signs in the snow piles today on Main Street. So, if we're not gonna keep the ordinances there and uphold them, let's get rid of them. Okay, obviously, when you can put F this and F that out there, and it says that also in, what is it, ordinance uh, six-six-six?
Uh, yeah.
We've talked about, Rob and I, we've talked about six-six-six, which basically protects children and, and people from foul language and, and other things. It, all of this comes into that, so are we gonna do something or not? So, I guess my question is, is this the correct place to have something put into the agenda?
It could go into planning because it's signs and, right, we're, signs would go into planning.
It started in planning originally.
But I mean, I mean, you know, I think we know the legal ramifications are what kinda prevented us from doing it.
And then he's questioning it being enforced or not.
Well, yeah, I think, um, I think several issues are on the table.
Yeah.
Whether we want to change ordinances to enforce these types of things, or if we're not, should we go take them out, right?
Yes.
Kinda what you're saying. We, we kinda shouldn't have them there if we're not gonna enforce. See how it's transpired? It, it, there's, it, it's, it's a free-for-all out there right now. And again, there's signs out there today, five, four months before the election, on city property, in the street.
Yeah, they.
Okay?
I think we could.
Nobody's upholding it. I don't know whose job it is still for. That's, that's why I want it brought into, into the, the meeting, and are we gonna uphold it?
Well, I don't think.
We were told we're, we'll get sued if we try to do it.
Corners of the roads, you know, I've seen them at the, there's a couple corners specifically, uh, and this was before the snowfall. Um, but it was, actually, I, I pointed them out a while ago, and some were, some were removed. Um, I don't know which department, and so maybe we could just add that for a conversation for planning and have a longer discussion.
I mean, it's on city property, that's not.
Yeah, if it's on city property, then we just need to figure out who enforces and removes it. That's one discussion. I think the other is enforcing, what you're referring to is the ordinance on private property, um, and that will be.
Or changing the ordinance to cover size. You, you don't want to injure people's rights, free speech, let's make it so they don't, can't put up their ten-foot-by-ten-foot sign up there that this or that. It's smaller, maybe, right?
Yeah.
If it wasn't ten-foot by ten-foot, maybe they wouldn't ask daddy, uh, what does that mean, daddy?
Well, it's not, not, not necessarily the sign that they're asking questions about, it's the two flags, um, and others, two instead of one, so.
I think we could, we could define flag as a form of sign.
So are you gonna tell me to take down my American flag? Are you just saying?
No, no.
As long as it says, so if it says Gil Brown's on it?
And, and look, I'm not saying these aren't treacherous areas. Uh, but some of these flag signs are on people's property, not on a pole, and that's another issue.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot to discuss. I don't think i- it's appropriate necessarily to discuss it here, but I think your point about putting it to a committee for further discussion is worthwhile.
Get it on an agenda and do what you can with it, and is this the appropriate way to do that? I really didn't want to get in it, and I, I'm probably scared that way, and I'm sorry.
All right. Thanks, Cliff.
I forgot what I was gonna say.
It'll come to you.
Oh, I know, I was gonna ask him, because you, you sort of alluded to it at a few points. Oh, we talked about changing the time.
Yeah.
Is that something we wanna talk about tonight, or, I mean, I don't know that we even need to vote necessarily, I don't.
My only question, Kay, uh, is for Shade Tree or any other committee or board that might be in here.
Well, I think they meet there, but Monday would be.
Yeah, now that they're.
They meet on Monday, though?
Shade Tree, on committee, committee of the whole, usually, they meet at five-thirty, is that what time it is? So in those.
But we've been meeting in conferences.
So it would be okay if we met at six o'clock here, and that's my question for council, is if six o'clock across the board would work?
All three meet, all three meetings.
All three meetings at six o'clock. Mayor, is there any?
All we have to do is make sure we announce soon.
Yeah, yeah. Mayor, is there any issues that you foresee with a six o'clock meeting across the board?
I, I, I don't, as long as all councils are comfortable with getting here.
Is there any, like Rob said, there's no real vote on this, so is there any comments or concerns?
Only way I think too, it could be changed if, then, with an exception, and I think sometimes you're gonna see maybe an exception needed, like with NDS or somebody that comes in and presents to us.
Yeah, that would be the only concern, is that businesses that typically would leave the offices at five, you know, they don't mind hanging around waiting. Yeah, that could be the only concern, is that businesses that typically would leave the offices at five, you know, they don't mind hanging around waiting.
Not that it would always happen, but to be able to just to say, if needed, to-
So do you want them all at five-thirty?
No, no, no.
No. No, but I'm just saying, it could happen where somebody that's doing a presentation could maybe-
But I think too, on the other hand, being on the end of, the other end of that for many years, um, in many different communities, I mean, I went at seven P.M. to present for council meetings.
That's true.
I mean, I drove, you know-
Just whatever time it was.
Yeah, whatever time was there. If you need to present your business, then you're there. That's part of your job.
You could always start later that day and, you know, adjust your-
So.
Yeah, I mean, we've made changes. We've had to have special meeting before committee of the whole, after, whatever. Yeah, I think that's, and committees, I think, are extremely flexible, because we're talking about starting the committee.
Okay. So six o'clock?
Next week?
February fourteenth, next week.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Is there any other older or new business? I don't have any comments, so. No comments for this evening, from me. Ms. Wood, is there anything you'd like to add to this tonight?
The only thing that I would like to say or recognize is our fire department, our engineer's office, um, obviously our parks and rec, more so in the spring and summer, but just how fantastic you all have been doing on the grants. I mean, you look at our agenda tonight, and the majority of it is grants. And, you know, we're, you know, in charge of the budget and, and keeping that, it's a tremendous help and just truly appreciated. I know the residents appreciate every grant dollar that you bring in here, and I can't thank you enough for everything you're doing, and good job.
Great point. Mr. Kelsey, anything you have?
Uh, I did want to mention that I am in favor of the same time for all three of the meetings. I think it'll be good for the council members, also good for the community, they'll know six o'clock is the time, no matter what the meeting.
Mr. Moskin?
Yes, I, there was a comment on the water bill I received recently pertaining to residents and businesses keeping the walkways cleared out in front. And I realize it's been an ordinance, but how would the ordinance be enforced? Who will take care of that? And I know there's a lot of residents that are not, that aren't physically able to go out and do that.
But my guess is, and I don't know, Kay, if you had anything to do with putting down the bill, but it seemed, the way I read it was more of a reminder to people that the city's not responsible. Because I think there's a high expectation. I even saw a news report about Cleveland, where, you know, the council was complaining about everything, but, um, uh, I think residents, uh, when they see other people walking, especially the elderly people walking with their dogs in the street, and, um, and they wonder why didn't the city plow the sidewalks? And I think that concerns them, so I read that note as just a reminder to residents, really not our responsibility, and there's an ordinance. It didn't say anything about enforcing it, because I think enforcing it is probably something that would get us in a lot of hot trouble, you know.
What I was referring to is, when there's an ordinance, an ordinance is there for a purpose, and it's just like what was mentioned earlier about an ordinance, if it's not going to be taken care of or looked at, this is what I'm referring to.
Well, I, I wouldn't be in-
I realize it's a suggestion and a reminder, but, but then, what good is it if it, something can't be done? And then when you have people that aren't physically able to get out and do that, I know what you're saying is a reminder, but then, what's the?
See, another thing I think people forget is that, you know, we had an extreme weather event. I mean, we had a foot of snow, and those kind of things, they're not what we write ordinance for. I don't think we should expect that to be the standard. But if it, if it snows a couple of inches, I think residents do have the responsibility, and businesses, by the way, it's not just, you know, residents, to clear the sidewalks. And I, and I'd hate to think that we would just abandon that practice. I realize, and I'm sure the city and the police realize, I mean, there are people who have difficulty doing that, and I don't think they're in, you know, it's not the intention of the city to go out and start citing people and fining them. Um, but I do think it's worth recognizing that, that where the responsibility lies, so that people aren't confused that it's the city's responsibility to come by and get-
I appreciate the comment. Mr. Kears, anything you have?
Uh, I was gonna say something about the charter review, uh, Mr. Barrett left, uh, but Christina and I, uh, went to their first meeting, and I was very impressed with the people on the count, on the commission, uh, the way they organized themselves, and the mayor was there, uh, and their plan of action for the next few months and taking a review of the charter. So I'm, you know, uh, optimistic that we're gonna have a good outcome for that commission this year.
Chelsea lady.
Oh, Chelsea was there. Oh, and-
We're sleeping people out all night. Uh, Ms. Michael, anything you wanna add? Mr. Harper?
Uh, no additional comments.
And then after the mayor's remarks here?
Keep it very brief, uh, just a couple of things, um, we are going to be having a JED meeting, it's gonna be virtual. But, uh, to see about establishing a JED in the area across from, uh, the Sheets, out on forty-four. Uh, we have four residents with combined acreage of, I believe, about twenty-one acres. And, uh, this may be the first one that we're able to put together. Uh, Dennis and I are going to, um, ask to meet with Mr. Benoit, who's the administrative head of the hospital, and to see, uh, what we can do with that particular area out there, we're thinking, and, and, uh, Mr. West is thinking that, uh, if we can capitalize on hospital types of support, things, uh, to go in in that area. Uh, I have not called for the meeting yet with him, but they've always been very gracious about meeting with us, so I don't anticipate a problem there. Just looking down the road, uh, it was brought up once before, uh, but I want to remind people along with taking care of your ethics commission obligations, that, uh, you need to take a look, you received a notice that your salaries are too low to be able to participate in the retirement portion of, of the thing, not that it's gonna add thousands of dollars to your monthly retirement, but, um, I, I think that you may wanna look at, uh, rates where at least puts you up to the standard, maybe a little cushion, because they go along with the, uh, to the most degree of the, uh, cost of living. Uh, and, uh, but this stuff has to be done. A year from now, people are gonna be running from air, and people that are, terms are up, you'll be picking up the paperwork. This has to be done before you get to that stage, so this is something that should be looked at if you're going to wanna do it. Uh, we're, we're starting to, you have a little non-competitive in some ways with, I think we should look at the salaries of all the elected people, uh, with that. You can say that without planning on being a part of it, uh, but I think that, uh, you do need to look at that.
Can you make a couple of comments on that?
Yes.
Um, so the limit, where I think we're just below it somehow.
Yeah, just a little bit.
And I, and it, it dawned on me, and somebody mentioned it to me, um, but they, I assume you're still taking out the ten percent, right? Where does the ten percent of the person's salary go?
It's still going to the overs, it's been the fourteen percent.
Okay, so they're just not counting the years.
Yeah, you're also getting the fourteen percent, we're still paying that.
Oh, it's fourteen percent.
Well, the city's paying fourteen percent.
Yeah, and ten percent-
And then we deduct ten percent, so the whole twenty-four percent goes to the overs.
Yeah.
It's going into your account.
Right.
And the fact is, when they compute the-
Service?
The service time, you're not getting the whole credit.
Yeah, and I don't know how that affects, it affects people who already have PERS. But, you know, one thing you can, and I educate people, but as people come on council, if they don't have existing PERS accounts, they can opt into a different type of PERS account that's similar to a 401K, and this wouldn't affect that. I know, because that's the kind of account I have.
Okay.
So, that's one option. The other thing is, uh, I was gonna mention, the idea that it has to be established by council before, um, the petitions are signed, is in our charter. And again, we have a charter, this is, you know, the perfect opportunity maybe to change that to maybe get a little bit less onerous, because it's very difficult to plan that far ahead.
We have two sets, two sets of cycles of elected officials, and-
Right. We didn't make the timeline almost, well, pretty much a year before somebody takes office, to just be just before they get to-
You're correct. Normally, the requirement is just before the office term starts, but in our case, it is not that, and that's why we tried to talk about it last time, and we just didn't have time because of that charter requirement.
Right.
If it wasn't for the charter requirement, we could have passed it and possibly implemented it by now.
So you're understanding?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's, that's fine. I, you're discussing exactly what I wanted you to.
Yep.
Uh, I think that it's not a case of, okay, wanting to gouge the city for anything, but this is something that we should be current on, uh, with that. And, uh, I feel comfortable saying it because I'm a benefit from it.
Yeah.
Uh, and other people that wanna run are afraid to say those sorts of things, but we still have to remain competitive in a certain way, uh, with this. And of course, you guys gave up a huge amount of money when you were, you took away the hospitalization. Uh, so it isn't that you haven't, members haven't, uh, been affected, uh, by these decisions, but in this particular thing, I, I think it's important to keep it where it's reasonable. And I think I will stop with that at this point in time, and, Mr. Simeon?
I would request an executive session.
For pending, pending-
Regarding existing legal matters that are now in court.
And I would like to add to that real estate.
Real estate?
To discuss real estate. Had another issue come up.
We have a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Hey, Marshall, see you in the, um-
Ms. Michael? Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Kelsey?
Yes.
Mr. Moskin?
Yeah.
Mr. Kears?
Yes.
Yes.